Welcome to the Chino Valley Unified School Board Candidates Forum, brought to you by the Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce and our sponsors. The purpose of this forum is to allow voters an opportunity to learn more about the candidates running for school board. This evening, we are here to meet the candidates running for the Chino Valley School Board. It is our goal that the information provided this evening will assist voters in making more informed decisions as they cast their votes. My name is Will Fleet. I'm publisher of the Chino Valley Champion Newspaper and a board member of the Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce. I have the privilege of serving as moderator this evening. Zeb Wellborn, President of the Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce, will serve as timekeeper. And just as a quick aside, thank you all in advance for your patience. I have moderated many of these types of candidates forums over the years, but never via Zoom. And I promise that one of the questions will not be what everyone is wearing below the waist. Format for this evening includes a two-minute opening statement from each candidate, a question and answer session, a round robin question and answers session, and a two-minute closing statement. Eight candidates are running to serve on the Chino Valley School Board this year, and we are fortunate to have all of them with us this evening. I would like now to introduce the candidates in the order they will be responding to our questions. The candidates were randomly assigned positions prior to our forum. The following are the candidates. Jody Moore, Vincent Coletta, James Na, Sylvia Orozco, Don Bridge, Andrew Cruz, Tony Flores, and Havania Hayes-White. We would also like to thank our sponsors for the candidates forum and our chairman's circle sponsors for your help and your support to help facilitate our candidates forums. Thank you to SoCal Gas for sponsoring our candidates forums, and thank you to Health Service Alliance, Team Lolly, City of Chino, City of Chino Hills, the Chino Valley Champion, Walmart, Waste Management, Ontario International Airport, TransTech Engineers, Inc., PAC Lab, Town Place Suites by Marriott Ontario and Chino Hills, Southern California Edison, Fodro Construction, Shell Roofing Solutions, Tri Counties Association of Realtors, Apollo Insurance Services, State Farm with John Edgar, Hussman Corporation, Good Enough Travel, Golden One Mortgage, Accredited Tax and Financial Planners, Inc., Pacific Energy Network, Sycamore Academy, Chino Hills, KB Real Estate, and Chino Commercial Bank. The opening statements can be two minutes or less. Our timekeeper, Zeb, will keep you informed of the time remaining via the chat box in the Zoom software. Zeb will indicate the time you have remaining at 60 seconds, 30 seconds, and then at 10 seconds, and then stop. If you are in the middle of the sentence at the stop, you may complete the sentence and then please, and then please stop so we can stay on time. So let's get started with the opening statements. Candidate Jody Moore, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Zeb Wellborn for your leadership over the chamber and for the Chamber of Commerce sponsoring this forum. I also want to take a little bit of time to acknowledge all the other men and women who have thrown their hat into the proverbial ring for a seat on the board. I said this about two years ago, no one subjects themselves to all that we go through in a campaign if they didn't really care for the community and care for, for our students. And so to the other candidates here on the forum, I am humbled to be here with you. I'm honored to be able to share in this experience with you. We are facing challenging times, and the word unprecedented has probably been used at nauseam to describe all that has been taking place in our community and in our nation. Historically, we know that turmoil, trials, and crises and difficulties in our society, for the most part, those who suffer the most are the weakest among us. And that would oftentimes represent the elderly, but also our children. Things have shifted to such a degree that any sense of normalcy for our children has been impacted in a major way. I actually saw this up close with my daughter when she graduated from high school, class of 2020. My daughter Cameron graduated from Ayala, and we had to go through the drive-through graduation. And let me say right up front, Principal Yarboy and all of the staff at Ayala did an amazing job trying to bring some sense of, of normalcy to the graduation. But at the end of the day, it was still a drive-through graduation. President Joe Schaefer was the speaker. But it was at that very moment when I realized that things had changed. I thought we had two minutes for... We don't have two minutes? Was that two minutes, Zeb?
He's got me down to zero. I, you could be right.
You sure? That's two...
Yeah, that was...
I'll take the work for it, Zeb. It was two minutes?
Yeah, you already had two minutes, yes, sir.
Oh, my goodness. Well, you guys know I'm a preacher, and so, as usual, I went over. I do apologize. I'll pick it up at my close. I thought for sure I had one more minute left, but thank you very much for the time and my apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next up is Vincent Coletta.
Hello, everyone. I'm Vincent Coletta, and I want to thank you so much for having me here, as well as all of you for being here. And thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for putting this Q and A together. I am running for school board because I currently have one child in the district, and I will soon have another. I am tired of turning into the board meeting only to see another reality show. I didn't think anything could get lower than the seasonal arc where we were sued because we were clearly violating the United States Constitution. Who knew we had another season coming where the main topic would be, how many are we willing to sacrifice? I am sick and tired of seeing unhinged rants at meetings along with behavior that only enables it. I also want to ensure that we get back to teaching our students about science and social studies, subjects currently minimized in elementary education. I will work with my fellow members to ensure a school board concerned about the safety of all students, a board concerned for the safety of teachers and staff, and a board concerned about nurturing a healthy learning environment is the order of the day with equal access for each school to the same learning pools. I want to ensure a school board worthy of our students, teachers, staff, and community by modeling the qualities that we hope to teach. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Coletta. Our next opening statement will be from James Na.
Thank you so much for inviting me to come to tonight's meeting. It's sad that I don't get to meet each one of you face to face, but times such like this, this is the only way we could do. But first, I'd like to thank all of our parents and all of our students, present and past, of your hard work. Our school district has been known as a high achieving school district around the region. The homes, when they're built, when they put up sign, the school district is Chino Valley Unified, they said, what, those homes sell like flying colors? This thing did not happen automatically without hard work from our parents and our students. Yes, we have great achievement. Our kids would graduate from high schools and go to great schools, but this is the one thing I believe, after 12 years of experience in the school board, now I see that the best education involves building intelligence and good character. And this is what I believe in, and this is what I will continue to do so. And again, I'd like to see our state of California going back to a golden state where people could rise up and have a beautiful life. It's sad to see that we have lost 600,000 population leaving state of California last year. So this is our time to work hard and let our children to flourish and bring back that golden California again. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Sylvia Orozco.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sylvia Orozco. I'm a lifelong resident. I attended Chino Schools and graduated from Chino High School. I am married to Ruben 30 years, and we have three wonderful sons, all who are C V U S D graduates. I was first elected to the Board of Education in November of 2006, and I am thankful for the opportunity to have served as a board member for 12 years. I'm honored to have had the public's trust to reelect me to the third term in 2014, an achievement that had not been accomplished in over 25 years. During my 12 years on the board, I was dedicated and remained diligent in my duties. I worked hard to be informed and responsive to the needs of students, parents, and staff. I listened to all concern, completed my own homework, and made my decisions based on all the information gathered. I always told myself that when my last son graduated, that I would not run for reelection. When my baby graduated in 2018, at the end of my third term, and so at the end of my third term, I opted not to run for reelection. But here we are nearly two years later, and I find myself still immersed in school board issues, and my passion for education and serving the community, community has not diminished. While on the board, our district tackled extraordinary financial uncertainties in the most challenging period for education, yet our students continue to reach academic success. Over my three terms served, I built a record of integrity, independence, and effective leadership. With today's historic challenges in education and more than likely future financial challenges, I believe it is critical for experienced leadership, and I'm better prepared to serve with the experience I've gained over the 12 years on the board. I recognize one person alone cannot make changes. However, I do believe that right combination together can make a difference. I believe I can continue to be a vital factor in that equation. As your trustee, I will continue to build trust and relationships to enrich our children's education. I will continue to serve with integrity, fiscal prudence, accountability, and thoughtful leadership. Together, let's continue to make a difference by putting children first. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next candidate is Don Bridge.
Good evening. My name is Don Bridge, and I first would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum and the many sponsors involved. I have 33 years' experience as a teacher leader in our school district of Don Lugo and Ayala High Schools. My wife, Jan, and I both retired from the school district in 2014. After teaching over 30 years, my wife taught at El Rancho, Glenmead, Eagle Canyon, and Canyon Hills Junior High. My leadership experience includes involvement with the Associated Chino Teachers as a bargaining team member, executive officer, and four years as ACT president. I'm very familiar with all aspects of the district, from the district office, budget, school sites, personnel, and facilities, of which I'm currently serving as an at-large member of the Measure G Bond Citizens Oversight Committee. At the state level, I was a liaison to the, for seven years, to the State Board of Education in Sacramento, and served on several state education healthcare associations involving teachers with CTA and AFT, classified members from CSEA, and administrative groups such as AXA, administrators, CASBO, the school business officials, and CSBA, the School Boards Association. As your school board member, I will advocate and support safe, healthy classrooms. With the COVID-19 pandemic, this becomes an extremely important issue as we work towards returning students back to the campuses. Our classified CSEA members are on the front lines, and we must make sure they have all of the proper supplies and protective equipment to ensure a safe learning environment for all students and staff in our schools. Also, I'll support proper technology for today's teaching and learning in online and eventual blended classrooms. We're seeing that technology involved tonight with the Zoom meeting. It's important that all of our students have access to this, both in the home and school. Also, I will support academic programs, including curriculum to meet grade level standards, and that which will help students prepare for future success, whether in college or career path. With that, again, I thank you for hosting this forum tonight and look forward to the rest of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Up next is Tony Flores.
Tony? Hi. This is Andrew. I'm number six.
My apologies. I, I have this in front of me, and I skipped over you, Andrew. My apologies. Andrew Cruz is up. Andrew Cruz.
Yes, you know, we have, you know, we have great schools and a great community that we live, and thank you for giving this opportunity that we're having right now. You know, currently, I've been in education for 22 years as a teacher and a librarian. I have lived in the community since 1997. Now, my children, they attend Chino Valley Unified School District. My life experiences have been molded into what I am today by my loving mother, my father, hard-working man and a military vet, and my three sisters, and my elementary teacher, Mrs. Lee, and my neighbor Ted Ryan, and my friends that I grew up. You know, as a parent, we must agree to make decisions in our children's best interest to move them forward with independence and confidence and courage. Our children deserve to be well-supported as they strive to achieve their individual goals and secure a most promising future. You know, this virus has stolen our kids' school experience and memories with their friends, teachers, and staff. The importance of social and emotional learning in the classroom, building relationships, and getting our kids back to normalcy is vital. As a person who desires free will, choices, and God, as a leader who serves, I cannot let this virus dominate our life. I student requested an item to be placed on October 15 to open up sports, conditioning, waiver, and reopen TK six classes, small cohort in-person instruction. Yes, there is a risk, there is a danger, you know, but we live in a country where the brave and the free reside, and it's so important that our children come back to their normal lives. As a school board member, as a candidate, I will be strong, and I will serve our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And now it is Tony Flores' time.
Hello, Chino Valley. My name is Tony Flores. I live in Chino. I am married. My wife and I have two elementary school-age children behind me that attend school in Chino. Working in residential management for past 20 years, I know the issues that our family space. I have seen them firsthand. I can bring that parent perspective and the Chino Valley Unified organizational perspective together to work within the system to move us forward. My community involvement, I am engaged in our community, and I think highly of parent engagement throughout the schools with our principals, assistant principals, EPA, PFA, Partnership for Learning Network, and the Family Engagement Center, and the San Bernardino Family Engagement Network. All the folks that know me know how engaged I am and in scouting. Community involvement, I was honored to receive the prestigious 2019 COAT Award presented by the Community Outreach Action Team nominated by ACT Associated Teachers this 2019. As a library volunteer, I nudged the county and city to renovate the Chino Branch Library. As you know, the grand reopening in our beautiful new library was spring of 2020. Serving on our LCAP, District LCAP Local Control and Accountability Plan, I provide, I helped the school district and the risk management come up with the decision to provide emergency disaster supplies to each school site, ensuring that each school had enough emergency supplies to last three days in the event of a major disaster. And when our kids go back to school, every classroom inside the front entrance, mounted on the wall, will have an emergency first aid box mounted in each of the classrooms. I started the chapter of the national program, All Pro Dad. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. And our next candidate is Havania Hayes-White.
Good evening. It is an honor to participate in tonight's candidate forum and to engage with fellow Chino Valley residents. Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Dr. Havania Hayes-White. I am a practicing doctor of education in educational leadership. I earned four degrees in education and three California teaching credentials. All were earned at California State University, Northridge. I have proudly served the field of special education for over 20 years. I began my career in the Los Angeles Unified School District as a special-day class teacher, serving students with moderate to severe disabilities for 15 years. I am an invested stakeholder in our community, as I am an induction program mentor teacher and professor who trains mentors and prepares new teachers for our local classrooms at both Chino Valley Unified School District and Chafee Community College. For 10 years, I have had the honor of conferring special education teaching credentials to university interns and student teachers all across Southern California. I am passionate about unbiased, impartial, ethical public service, teaching and learning, and academia. It would be an honor to represent you and your family as your next elected school board trustee. I am ready to serve.
Thank you, and thank you all. Now it's time to move on to the question and answer segment of the program. To encourage candid responses, the candidates have not received advanced notification of the questions that will be asked of them this evening. The questions are a combination of those received in advance from the community and chamber members and those prepared by members of the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Committee. The first three questions will be asked of all candidates. The remaining questions will be asked of candidates individually in rotation. One question will be asked of each candidate so as to cover as many questions as possible. Each candidate will then have the opportunity to refer back to a question that was asked of another candidate. So please keep track of the numbers assigned to each question. I will, I will read off the number of the question before I read the question. So try to keep track of the one that you would like to respond to later. Candidates, you will have up to 60 seconds to answer each of the questions. As we did earlier, please pay attention to the chat box to help you stay on time. Depending on the time that we have, we may do two rounds of questions. We'll just see how it goes. So let's begin with the first question, and this will be directed to candidate Jody Moore. What are the top three issues facing our school district, and how would you address them?
We're facing a pandemic, so of course, distance learning is a major issue for me. Also, we're going to face a budget crisis coming up because of the allocation that's going to be reduced to our states because of closed businesses. And then, of course, how do we return our teachers and our students back to the classroom in, in safety? As it pertains to distance learning, I know that there is an effort to focus on the technology and methodology of distance learning, but I'm also concerned about the home environment. How do we partner with parents to make sure that the homes are conducive to, to learning? How do we partner with parents to make sure that they are equipped to know how to partner with our teachers? I want us to focus on that. I want us to make sure that we make that a priority and put our dollars there. Again, as it pertains to the budget, I have, everyone knows me as a, as a, as a pastor in the city, but also have over 25 years of human resources experience. And so I've helped to navigate companies through tough, complex budget crises with workforce planning. So I'll be able to bring that skill set to the board as we have to prepare for some budget challenges that's going to come up. And then again, based upon the board policies as it pertains to infectious disease and pandemics, we need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to make, to make sure the classes are safe for our teachers and for our students to return.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Coletta, same question, three, top three issues.
I agree. The number one issue is definitely going to be budget. We are going to be having a crisis of budget that we have not seen as far as I can tell forever, and we are going to have a crisis of staffing. We are going to be losing people constantly. We are going to be losing people to illness, to stress at home. This is a very different situation than any of us have encountered before. And I agree that we are also going to have a problem dealing with COVID, our infectious disease issue that is currently going on right now. For budget, we are definitely going to have to cut, and it's going to look like it will be things that I feel would be, would not help us keep our children safe. That means, for example, things such as contact sports would definitely be something that we shouldn't be encouraging at this point in time. As for staffing, make sure it's safe and keep our staff safe, our teachers safe, our students safe. Focus there. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Na, same question.
Yes, it looks like everyone's agreeing that our health issue will be the primary issue with these pandemics. And, and I have to say, I'm very committed to make sure that we use our resources to each classroom so that the classrooms are safe for the students and then staffs alike. Now, our school district, when we're talking about the budget, not only we're facing the cut from the state, but also we're declining enrollments. So we must, we must, now's the time to be proactive, making sure that we have programs that is attractive for all the district students to come and, and take those empty seats. We could build more schools. That is in the plan already. We have Chino High School, and we have Preserve Number Two School coming, and those schools will help balance our budget. Now, lastly, I would highly recommend not to refill those positions, those are emptied for now, so that we have enough funds available in the general fund. And I like to use those funds to the student programs and, and support music, sports, and art. That will be pertinent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Orozco.
So one of the main issues is going to be navigating through this uncharted territory because we need to keep our focus on our student achievement, but yet we need to keep in mind everyone's health and safety. You know, and you hear about the uptick of possible more cases coming up, and so we really have to, to focus on that. We have to make sure that we provide and ensure a safe and healthy learning environment for our students and staff as they return to classes or when they return to classes. The other thing is, as everyone has indicated, budget, budget will be an issue. Maybe not this year or next year, but it will be an issue the following year. I was on the board when we had to make significant reductions. We, we closed schools. We made several cuts. It's a difficult process, and I have that, that experience. And so I believe that I would be, my experience would assist in making those decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Bridge, same question. Mr. Bridge, Don Bridge?
Pardon me, I forgot to unmute myself. I think we're all pretty much in agreement with what I've been saying with, with the COVID-19 situation, with students strictly on, on distance learning now. We need to make sure that we have our classrooms safe when they're able to go back. And as I mentioned, CSEA is going to be on the front lines of that, of getting our classrooms ready. However, we have to follow the county guidelines, and with the county still keeping us in purple, it's still another two weeks before we get to red, then it's probably two weeks beyond that, based on what they're saying for us to go back to the classrooms. We're going to have to keep, keep an eye on, on that. And then, of course, the budget. The budget, the governor comes out January 10th with the preliminary budget. There's going to be a lot of advocating that we're going to have to do and, and be proactive in making sure that we get the funds that we can out of, out of Sacramento before the May revise comes out and ultimately the, the signed budget the end of June. So those, those things I think are extremely important right now, the distance learning, the blended return to... So those, those things I think are extremely important right now, the distance learning, the blended return to school and the, and the budget.
Thank you. And next up with the same question is Mr. Cruz.
Yes, hi. Yeah, so, you know, we definitely need the nurses and the custodians. They'll definitely, will be needed to maintain health and safety. And, and also definitely when it comes to reagents and, and cleaning agents, definitely there'll be an increase in the budget for those as well. And also, obviously, also routines will have to be, you know, initiated from the school site and family sites as well. And in terms of the budget, you know, we hire one person, that is the superintendent, and the superintendent hires his cabinet. And, you know, they're very proactive, and they have been anticipating these situations, this situation. And I think it may be as worse as the 2008. But there's one thing that I will not, I will not support, and that is layoffs. So that is total destruction of families, and I will not, I will not tolerate that. Others, fine, but when it comes to layoffs, I will not support layoffs whatsoever. There is a paradigm shift as well, and that is education. Next year, it's not going to be traditional.
You're at time, sir.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. And with the same question, top three issues, Mr. Flores.
Yes, the budget is very important, and I do not want to see our ADA continue to drop each year. And the ADA that I'm talking about is the average daily attendance. Our school district does not generate money. We get our money from ADA. I'm talking about, again, the average daily attendance. For a moral conscientious business perspective, we need these children in school. Statistics in other school districts and from board members outside the Chino Valley I associate with, you know, they share with me that getting these kids in school on time, you know, is our biggest funding. And we need to work with these families and all the languages that they have. Chinese, Latino, Mandarin, or Korean, what have you. We need to make sure that we are communicating with these parents, and we are communicating with these kids so they know exactly what the system process is so they will be happy to attend school, be to school on time.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Dr. White, same question.
The top three issues impacting our school district is as follows. Number one, safely opening schools. Number two, the lack of sound, responsible leadership. And number three, negative media attention. My goal is to draw positive media attention to our school district by showing the greater inland empire that we Chino Valley residents indeed understand and value what truly matters. Sound, responsible, ethical, and transparent leadership that keeps the focus on what your tax dollars pay for. An inclusive, equitable, equitable public education which prepares all students for college and careers within our diverse economy.
Thank you very much. That's the, the end of the first question. We have two more questions that all of you will address. And the second one is, our educational system has changed drastically due to the coronavirus. Decisions are made to determine when to shift between implementing hybrid in-classroom and online learning, learning models as examples. In your opinion, how should our school district navigate these unique times? And we will start again with Jody Moore. You have one minute.
Thank you. And these are unique times, and, and there's really no easy answer to, to this question. I want to reemphasize that it is important that our students and our teachers return back to the classroom. But they must return back to the classroom in safety. We want to make sure that our, our protocols are tight. We want to collaborate in liaison with our, with healthcare officials to make sure that we are doing our due diligence there. As it pertains to hybrid and, and hybrid learning, we, we will have an opportunity to make sure that parents, parents have everything they need by way of help from the district, resources from the district to help them be better as the primary teacher. Parents are really the primary teacher for our children. And so it's important that they partner with, with our teachers in the classroom. I would love to see us put consultants in place to work, especially with low-income families, to make sure that they have everything that they need technologically in the home, to be able to have a, a network where parents can call in if they're having difficulty around technology, to have consultants that will be able to show them how to best set their homes up so that it's conducive to, to learning. I know I'm running out of time here, but I, I would see that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Vincent Coletta.
For me, the safest option to getting our children back to school is to wait until there are no more cases in the county. That is the safest, most effective option to ensure we have a safe learning environment for our children to return to school. Because on top of that, some of the most disenfranchised children in this community are those with learning disabilities and other issues. We cannot forget about them. They are often the ones most forgotten about. They are also the ones who are more often than not at risk of severe complications from this illness. And the fact that we, we are forgetting about them is very disturbing to me. The safest option we need to do is to wait until this county is clear of COVID, and then we can start looking at maybe a hybrid model. But not until the very end are we able to give, returning to an actual school. That is the best option to ensuring a safety return for our staff and our students. And I do want to ensure that everyone gets the help they need to ensure a good, safe learning environment at home with all the tools necessary.
Thank you. James Na, same question.
I have been getting lots of phone calls from many parents, and they all agree that the face-to-face instructions in the classroom was most beneficial for their children. But we're enduring this online education because of the pandemics. Some say it will take next four years to completely have it gone zero. But that is impossible. We're in a business of education. As a parent, I have two children online at home, and, and it's not easy. So I understand that. But then again, the safety is at first. We need to be very cautious, but schools must be opened. I believe as other, as other school districts have done and small schools have done, you know, smaller setting, especially those parents with special needs children and, and athlete students that who really needs help from the school, not just from home. So I'm keeping it very close eyes on when we should open the school, but hopefully it'll be, it should be right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roscoe.
Honestly, there is no right or wrong answer to this question. You have a thought process on each end of the spectrum. You open schools, don't open schools. It's important for us not to choose sides, but rather we need to show compassion. We need to problem solve. We need to communicate and collaborate, and the main thing is to keep their focus on our students. We are in unprecedented times, and this is a challenge for everyone, everyone. Parents, students, teachers, staff, and administration. And the challenge is navigating through this uncharted territory. I believe in choices, and I know that the district did ask parents and staff to select a learning method, either distant learning or blended learning. And the district does have a plan in place to implement once it receives approval. But you got to remember that the district must abide by county and state guidelines. One of the problems is, one of the problems is that the state appears to keep moving its target. And so that becomes an issue. In regards, I'm looking at my chat box.
You'll have more opportunities. Okay, Mr. Bridge.
Thank you. The one thing, teachers and students and, and even, we, we want, want to get back to the classroom. There's nothing that replaces that completely where the teacher is with, with the students in the classroom and getting that feedback and, and everything that, that you get when you are physically able to see your students and they're able to see their teacher and work. We can't rush back. I don't want to see us get back into the classroom and then have to shut things down because the situation gets worse. I think we have to go step, step by step, look at, as I said earlier, what the, what the county is, is doing and recommending because we have a unique district. We have three cities. Right now, from what I understand, Chino Hills is, is doing pretty well in, in cases. But Chino and Ontario aren't doing quite as well. And so you can't, you know, reopen just part of the district and, and then have the other part of the district out. So it's going to take a lot of planning, a lot of, a lot of checking, and we'll just have to see. It goes slowly is my, my advice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cruz, you're next. Mr. Cruz. Did we lose him? Andrew Cruz?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Oh, yes. So this is learning has, has failed, and we have increase of abuse in, in children. And parents are stressed out. You know, there's, you know, this might be a good positive what has happened. That is that, you know, we noticed that college blended is very similar to, blended education is very similar to college. So I foresee that coming in the future, and we noticed that one-to-one computers were able to do that. And, and in terms of that, we could also mix traditional in the system. You know, especially for our Al Cap or those students that want to be part of the system. Thank you. Hello?
Thank you. So, Mr. Flores, you are next with the same question.
Yes, I feel bridging the gap between the school as usual and distant learning challenges. During this distant learning time, it is even more critical that the partnership between the school and home be supported. I mean, again, like I said before, parent engagement. You know, I definitely support two-way communication, district support with technology tools, and self-care strategies for families and staff district-wide. It is so important that these parents and these children understand what is happening and how to do their lessons and stay engaged. That is my number one thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. White.
As an induction program mentor teacher for the district, I am honored to support new teachers as they are learning how to navigate the online school environment. I am impressed with how quickly teachers have learned how to engage with their students, collaborate with families, and conduct IEP meetings all online. We all want to return to school. I also want students, families, faculty, and staff to return to a safe, healthy classroom environment that mitigates the spread of COVID-19. Decisions to reopen schools must be based on state, county, and city health department data. We must consider and monitor what tier our county is in and how many positive cases have been identified within our region. And based on that, we can decide what type of learning platform we need to go to for our students and families.
Thank you very much. Zeb, did you want to share something at this point?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in and say, Andrew, we're getting some feedback with your phone, so I'm putting you on mute. So when it's your turn to speak, just, that'll be the cue to unmute yourself.
Okay. All right, so the final common question that all of you will be addressing is the third question here. And we will go, just to mix it up a little bit, we will go in reverse order this time. So Havania Hayes-White will start us off. Here is the question. What steps will you take to ensure all children and their families in the district are treated without bias and/or discrimination due to religion, color, aptitude, immigration status, or sexual orientation? Dr. White.
I am a woman of deep faith, and I come from a family-based, faith-based background. As a public educator for over twenty years, my experience is that each school community represents diverse cultures, faiths, religious beliefs. But the one thing that unites the community is focusing on the education of children and serving them without bias. As a professor, this is what I teach my university interns and student teachers. Please understand your individual biases and check those biases at the door. Because we as public servants accept the duty to function as impartial, unbiased educators who support all students on our rosters, regardless of their cultural backgrounds, languages, ethnicities, and so forth.
Thank you. And Mr. Flores.
Hello. I'm Catholic by faith. I've been a Christian all my life. For me, that means in my heart, I believe in Jesus Christ, my Lord and Savior. I also believe in the principles of the scout oath and scout law as a scout leader. In no way have I ever felt my relationship with God would conflict the fulfillment of my duties and responsibilities as a husband, dad, help scout leader in our school district or as a board member. Who am I to say who you can or cannot love? Or as a board member to display the California Department of Education codes and disobey them? The Bible I read, Jesus loves us all and forgives us all. You know, whatever you do to the least of your brothers and sisters, you do to me. So everyone in this school district, parents, teachers, staff, students, live in good faith and be kind to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cruz. Andrew Cruz. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Mr. Cruz, yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you are up.
So, okay, so I've been in education for many years, and I've worked at Title I schools. And all kids are the same. They're no difference. There's hurt, goodness, joys, and their, and their experiences in life. Our, our primary objective is that they, they have a fulfilling academic success, that they have, they have good memories and good experiences. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bridge, same question.
Thank you. We need to make sure that we celebrate diversity, that we respect every student, that we, if the student feels that they are, they are wronged in some way, that, that that is, that is taken, taken care of. We are using our counselors, using training that we should be doing for all staff and, and teachers as far as diversity training and unconscious bias training. That's the thing that we need to do, is to make sure that we celebrate all and, and respect all. Every, every child is, is important in, in our school system. We can't let anyone slip through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Roscoe.
So my entire twelve years on the board, I can honestly say that I had never made comments regarding my religious viewpoint, and I'm a Christian, nor did I try and force, as I was, people would say, trying to force my personal agenda, and not true. I would always go as far as to say that my personal, my religious beliefs are personal. I've always made an honest effort to be objective and do what's in the best interest of all children in our district, regardless. children in our district regardless. I've always tried to make, be inclusive of everyone, students, staff. I think it's important that, that we display that, that we display the compassion. I think our, our district motto says it best, humility, civility, and service.
Thank you. Next, James Naah.
Yes, today, our nation has been divided and very polarized for different reasons. But I believe this is a time that we need to revisit and go back to the basics. Look at our forefathers. They have named this country as United States of America, United. Our forefathers written the Pledge of Allegiance. It says, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." It means we are all equal. However, more importantly, that we need to teach our kids, sometimes adults, that this comes with, yes, same rights, but also with same responsibilities. We are all same people that are valuable and this life has a meaning for each one of us, and that is to love each other. Thank you.
Vincent Coletta, same question.
I have a wife with a disability and have lived my married life, watching how she has been discriminated against by some of the tiniest things in our society that we would never note. I approach everything from the basis of, I am completely neutral. I make sure I have no inclinations as I move into a subject. However, I have to acknowledge that members of the community, people with disabilities and other groups have experienced discrimination and they will approach situations that I have, would never have expected to encounter discrimination, a hostility, or subjects like that. I have to acknowledge that our society is not unbiased and will not treat everyone fairly. So I want to make sure that we give everyone an equal chance and acknowledge that they will be coming from a different position than I will.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Jody Moore, same question.
It's right there in the district, the board policy, 5145. It says the district shall provide age-appropriate instruction to help promote and understand and respect of human rights, diversity, intolerance in a multicultural society, and to provide strategies to ma-manage conflicts constructively. If we created atmosphere that supports the board policies, we will be able to be successful in that endeavor. I actually agree with Don Bridge. We have to celebrate diversity. We have to create an atmosphere where people can share their stories. It is in sharing each other's stories that we are able to have a better understanding of the, of the diversity and celebrate that diversity. You can't celebrate diversity in a vacuum. You have to understand each other. And so we want to make sure that we have clubs on campuses, opportunities on campuses so that people can share experiences, share, share culture, share stories, and have a better understanding so that we can come together. This nation must not be divided, but that division, we, we must not be divided on our campuses also. Our campuses need to be a place where people can come together and be unified, and it starts with leadership.
Thank you, sir, and thank you all. That concludes the three common questions that everyone will be asked, and now we will move on to what we call the round robin. And so we are going to start with you, Mr. Moore, and you will get question number four. Make note again of the numbers of each of these questions in case you would like to come back to that question later. So, number four. Career and technical education is a growing trend in secondary education. What is your plan or strategy to connect local businesses with our high schools for better career and technical education?
It's a great question, and I think it's no coincidence that we are being sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and Zeb Welborn is, is here on the screen. I think this is a great opportunity for us to partner through the chamber to see how we might leverage leaders in our, in our businesses and our industries to become mentors, to collaborate with our district leaders, leaders in our district, to see what kind of programs might, might be available to get kids more, more involved. Mentorship, opportunity for there to be job share, opportunity for our, our children to be able to leave campuses once we return back to campus, leave campuses to spend time with CEOs and heads of industries so that they might have an opportunity to see what's out there and what's available, what's available to them. When I was in high school, I was an intern at Rockwell, Rockwell International, and it was just, it was through a great program where Rockwell partnered with Cerritos High School, where I went to high school, and I was able to go to Rockwell and spend time with them one day a week in the area of marketing, and it sparked my interest. And so if we can have programs like that, if we can have partnerships like that, especially here in our city, working through the Chamber of Commerce, we might be able to, to move the needle in that area.
Thank you, sir. So Vincent Coletta, you will have question number five. And question number five is, what has been your previous experience with the Chino Valley Unified School District that has motivated you to serve as a board member? Mr. Coletta.
The past couple months have been quite disturbing to see what has gone on inside the chamber. My experiences with that were quite appalling, watching people enable various, a member to go off on tangents that either were unscientifically backed or just bits of rage. And another member who completely disregarded a meeting where we were going to clearly be having a very hot topic discussed and left not hearing any of the other parents' points of view or thoughts on the subject. I was very disturbed and I thought to myself, this needs to change. I cannot vote for these people. And I thought, I couldn't live with myself if come election time, I see three names and we only have to pick three. I think that is one of the most, most horrible things you can see in a democracy. So I wanted to put my name on there to make sure that the fellow parents of the school district had another choice.
Thank you, sir. So now we will move on to James Naah, who will get question number six. Question number six is, how do you view your role as a school board member in relation to the superintendent, staff, and administration?
Yes, a great question. The superintendent has to run the whole school district offices and staffs have to run their departments. And yes, we do have large number of, of staffs, but as me, I represent the students. It's greater in numbers, 28,000 children. I represent them. I represent them as I am their parent. All, all of parents has the same vision. We want our children to be better than we are. We want them to have a better jobs, better education, and better moral character. So therefore, I believe I'm the advocate for our children and our parents.
Thank you, sir. Question number seven will go to Sylvia Roscoe. And question number seven is, do you think one's religious ideologies should have a place in Chino Valley School Board meetings and discussions?
So a person's ideology frames that person, and so indirectly it, it has, indirectly you, you use what your background gives you. Now, to actually practice prayer in a school board meeting, no. We have to be inclusive of everyone and being inclusive with everyone sometimes mean not, not doing, not practicing. For instance, as I said earlier, I have kept my religion to myself. It was personal, and that's because I know that others don't practice the same faith that I do. And it's important to be inclusive, and so it's important that we don't, like people said, try and force our personal agenda on others.
Thank you. And so now we move on to question number eight, and this will go to Don Bridge. The question is, if an uptick in COVID cases forces the district to extend remote learning, what areas of remote learning do you think need to be adjusted in an effort to better support our students and staff?
Oh, good question because I, I fear that we might be heading that, to that uptick now based on everything that we're starting to see in the, in the news. We need to make sure that, that our academic subjects are, are supported, but also, also how do we, how do we work on, on electives? We have students that are in, that are in leadership, you know, how are they able to, to access things through, through remote learning? We just need to make sure that we have support for the, for the teachers to get them the materials that they, that they need to do, to do virtual learning. And how can we support all subjects, not just, not just a few? And that's, it's, it's going to be a difficult, difficult decision, and that, and that's why I said we have to keep watching what's going on with the news, but I, I fear this uptick, at least right now, doesn't look good. I hope I'm wrong in the next, the next few, the next few weeks, but that's what, that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and we will move now to question number nine, which will go to Andrew Cruz. And question number nine is, due to the pandemic, our teachers must be prepared to shift from traditional in-person teaching to remote learning. What types of professional development training will you put in place to ensure that our teachers and staff are prepared for this shift and the new set of needs for students?
So from, from distance learning to traditional, let's say next year, the transition is going to be very, like for instance, distance learning was very difficult at first, so there will be a form of adaptation. So coming next year, definitely they'll have to plan. The first initiation will be the safety and the health of the school site and getting ready for, for the distancing of chairs, getting ready for the teachers, the building of routines, and the cafeteria, the PE area. So all that has to be the first priority before things start rolling. And so once, once we start setting up inspectors, setting up the place where it's appropriate for the county, then you would slowly start with blended. And as, as you build it, especially, I'm changing the subject, obviously you've got the buses too, they'll have to be, they'll have to be trained for, for, for how to sit within the bus. So it would be tough at the beginning, but as the routine starts rolling in.
Thank you, sir.
It's just without, thank you.
Thank you. So now we go to question number 10, which goes to Tony Flores, and the question is, post-COVID-19, there will likely be a reduction in funding for K-12 education. What is your plan or strategy to mitigate funding shortages?
Good question. One thing that I would do is like I shared with you before is parent engagement. I can't stress enough on parent engagement and the ADA, the average daily attendance. We have to make sure that all kids are attending school, whether it's virtual or in the classroom, and that is the most important thing. And whatever it takes to communicate with those students and parents so they feel engaged in their school and, again, their language, their love language, how they communicate in their home, bringing that back to school so everyone comprehends moving forward, so everyone is happy when we get, go back to school. I feel, serving on our school safety planning committee, you know, the schools are being prepared and everyone is ready. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So question number 11 goes to Havania Hayes-White, and question 11 is, how do you plan to support or enhance special education and provide adequate funding for it in our district?
That is an awesome question. Special education is dear to my heart, and I believe that we need to come together as a collaborative partnerships and teams in understanding what funds we do have available to our individual sites, and then we have to make sure that we understand what are the needs of each student and make sure that we prioritize and make sure that we have the fundings to provide all of our students with IEPs to have equal access to the curriculum, to the Common Core standards, to the alternate standards. But it has to be a partnership with the, the districts and with understanding what the funding sources that are available from the state and be able to understand a plan on how to allocate funds for all types of services that students may need with, with special, with special ed.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. We've got through that first round quite well. However, we are running a little short on time. We're not going to have the responses to the questions that we had planned to do earlier. So we will move on to our next set of questions and then move to closing statements. So if you want to refer back to any of these questions, you can do it in the closing statement. So what we'll do, I think, is go in reverse order again. So we will start with you, Dr. White, again, on question number 12, which is, how will you ensure the district supports Sycamore Academy and its needs?
Repeat that, please.
How will you ensure that the district supports Sycamore Academy and its need?
So the Sycamore Academy is a charter school in our district, and so we need to be very clear about the goals and expectations of their school site plan, and we need to have collaboration amongst the district and the charter school and make sure that they are indeed following the plan that they filed with us and to make sure that the, the families and the parents are indeed getting the services that they said that they were going to receive while attending Sycamore Academy.
Thank you, ma'am. So, Mr. Flores, the next question is for you, question number 13. And what is your position on schools of choice, charter schools, homeschool, et cetera? And what is your understanding of how they affect the district?
Charter schools. I feel charter schools are public schools, and the money should go where the student goes. We have wonderful schools in Chino Valley, and we have a couple of charter schools, and both of them are doing well. I feel we don't need five. However, I'm not against charter school. I know both of the principals at both of the charter schools and the staff, I've investigated, did my due diligence on both of those schools for the past few years, and a school is school and kids are kids. The parent feels that their school, that, that their child can learn better and they are happier as a parent, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you, and the next question, question number 14 is for Andrew Cruz. Thank you. And the next question, question number 14 is for Andrew Cruz. Mr. Cruz, the question is, how would you address concerns from parents and students? And what would you do to resolve those concerns?
Well, usually when it comes to the concerns of parents and students, it is best not to micromanagement, micromanage those situations that you take it to a higher level. And, and the next level would be, if it's a level where you've got parent and students, then you would take it to the school site. I learned over the years that, you know, micromanaging is not, is not a good thing. And so you start first, you start first with the hierarchy that there, there is. And sometimes, if, if it's necessary, you go directly to the superintendent. But that would be the best policy, because you know, there's policies laid down. It's, it's ideal to follow them rather than doing something on your own, because then it causes chaos. You know, you're going against policies where, where it's best to follow through these systems rather than doing what you think is best and is best, but it's best to follow through because you could create more of an issue than than, you know, doing that. So it's best to go to a higher officials with that. Thank you.
Thank you. So next is question number 15, which will go to Don Bridge. And the question is, what is your opinion on broadband access for the digital classroom?
I, I think broadband access is, is extremely important. I think every classroom needs to have access to it. I have broadband in here. In fact, I just recently up my internet here at home to, to 100, 100 download, because I didn't consider 50 was enough. I think we, broadband is going to be extremely important. Whether it be through, through wireless technology, whether it be through, through cable. We need to have access in, in not only our classrooms, but also, also in the homes and the communities, even, even hotspots for those students that don't, don't have it at home. It's gonna be extremely important. I think everything nowadays seems to be running on the, on the internet, whether, whether it's streaming with TV, whether it's some kind of research or educational. It's, it's extremely important. It's, it's almost to the point where we can't live without it anymore. And we wonder, how did we live without it 30 years ago? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Question number 16 will be going to Sylvia Orozco. And the question is, what expectations do you have when it comes to board service? How much time are you able to devote?
Well, I can go by experience. So at one time, it was almost a full-time job. But that's because I chose to put that many hours to the board, because I was learning at the beginning. But I take, I would always put in what was necessary. So read our agendas, read, did our home, did my homework. There was a a major issue. I always did my homework and not just with the staff. I investigated whether it was online or I would call other educators from other districts and ask them what they were doing. So it's important that as a board member, you invest the time that is necessary to make the right decision, the right decision for our children.
Thank you. The next question, number 17, goes to James Nah. And the question is, what are your ideas to address declining enrollment?
Yes, great question. As I have said, we need to be proactive. We're building new high school that will bring the excitement in our community and surrounding communities where we can bring the programs that are very popular in, let's say, in Orange County. They're top schools. We could send our, our staffs and bring those programs so that we can attract not only students from our, our region, but from the outside too, because ADA counts. And also not staffing the students, the, the staffs, so that we have extra reserve that could be used to put back into programs for our students. Therefore, we would have more parental support and more students that are willing to come to school in our school district. I want our school district to be number one destination for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Nah. The question, next question, number 18 goes to Vincent Coletta. And the question is, do you think it's important to have term limits for board members?
That's a very good question. I would definitely agree with the idea that we should have board limits for term, for, sorry, term limits for board members. It ensures fresh faces, new people. We don't get stuck with incumbents, as a lot of our political system is mostly stuck around incumbents. It's a great way to get people out that don't need to be there and get new people and usually younger people, fresher people that would really help and revitalize. I think that's an excellent idea, and I would fully support that sort of position.
Thank you, sir. And finally, question number 19 will go to Jody Moore. And the question is, how can our district better teach anti-racism?
Again, great, great question. And I spoke to this earlier when I referenced our board policy. But I, I, I believe that within our curriculum, we need to make sure that we are teaching our children how to celebrate differences, how to be fair to others. I'm even open to exploring implicit bias training for our staff, and operative word is exploring that. At the end of the day, learning history, at the end of the day, creating safe zones for students to converse and to dialogue with each other, allowing the sharing of ideas and divergent backgrounds and journeys. All of that comes together to make sure that we understand what has happened historically in our nation, but also to set it in the proper context and perspective. It's important that we understand history. It's important that we know history so that we don't repeat history. But it's important that we understand history so that we understand, so that we know the journey that each individual that they've had to, to, to travail in our nation. And so that's important for us.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
So now we have, we are moving on to the final leg of the program, which is closing statements. Each of you will have up to two minutes to make your final statement for the evening. As before, our timekeeper extraordinaire, Mr. Welborn, will keep you on target. And we are gonna flip the order once, one more time. And so we will go back to you, Mr. Moore, to make your closing statement, two minutes.
Thank you. And this time I'll stay, I'll stay within time. So everyone knows here that I am a pastor in this city. I'm very proud to lead a ministry that I've led for 19 years. I have, I approached my life from a biblical worldview. I am a believer in Jesus Christ. I do not hide from that. I do not shy away from that. What most people don't know, though, is that I've also spent 25 years in corporate America as a senior leader in human resources. And so it is through that, that I've had the responsibility for leading organizations around change, around diversity, around inclusion. It, it allows me to operate in the perspective of, of, of governing based upon policies. At the end of the day, my responsibility, if I, if I'm privileged to be on the board, my responsibility is to ensure the solvency of the district and to make sure that our classrooms are conducive to giving our kids the best education. The best education. So, so listen. I, I want to work with other leaders in the school district. I believe that we have a great opportunity to, 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 to further the education of our children. I want to govern well for all students within the district. I do it in corporate America. I can do it as a member of the Board of Education. Again, Zeb, thank you so very much for the time, and it's been great having conversation with everyone here on the screen.
Thank you very much. As you saw from Zeb's note, everyone, it looks like we're down to a minute and a half because we are running short on time. And so next closing statement, a minute and a half for Vincent Coletta.
My fellow parents and community members, I hope that I have shown you that I will approach decisions from a place of deep care for others and that I weigh all available information thoughtfully and with logic. I want to make sure that we don't forget any child. We don't leave anyone behind. And we understand the positions that everybody is going through right now, the hardships we are having. Please consider me as a thoughtful representative who will examine all matters of the board, weighing the needs of our community, the many in our community, and in a fair, honest way with reason, logic, and understanding. Please vote for me for school board. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. James Nah, 90 seconds closing statement.
I'm so happy about our future students in Chino High School with News High School and preserve two of school students. I can see their smiles already. I'm all about those children. There was a teacher just passed away, Mr. David Browning from Chino Hills High School. He said, be good to yourself and be good to others. Those are his last words left to our students. I want to keep his legacy. And I like to read, if I have a time, a little text I got from one of our former students. I have known James Nah for more than six years. I met him while I was a student at Don Lugo High School. Since then, I graduated from Capitali Pomona with bachelor's degree in political science and now getting my masters in public administration. James mentorship and support him to become successful. He's like the father I never had. Michael Vazquez. This is what makes me happy. And thank you all for participating tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Closing statement for Sylvia Orozco is next.
Putting children first is my commitment, and I'm grateful for the honor of having served our students as a school board member. Over the 12 years, I built a record of integrity, independence, and effective leadership. And I stand ready with your support to return to service as your trustee. Trust that I will represent our students with dignity and professionalism, treating others with respect. I understand the governance process, understanding a board member's role as part of a governance team. I will continue to represent the values of our community. I support strong and appropriate academic and curriculum standards, along with the support services needed to give every student the opportunity to succeed. I will be fiscally responsible. Trust that I will continue to keep the wellbeing and ongoing success of our children first. Today, in the face of uncharted adversity in a historic pandemic, it's imperative for proven leadership to ensure that we are fulfilling every child's potential to attain academic success, that we're supporting social and emotional wellbeing, that we're relationship building, ensuring parents and CDUSD professionals' voices are heard, that we're maximizing student learning through safe and healthy environments, and that we're sustaining technology to maintain student engagement and support students' success. I'm confident with a collaborative spirit, proven educational experience, and an undeviating focus on our students' achievements. Our students can and will continue to succeed. I'm committed to remaining steadfast and serving with integrity, fiscal prudence, accountability, and thoughtful leadership. Together, we will weather the storm by putting children first.
Thank you. Don Bridge, your closing statement?
Thank you. Always education first is my theme. When I came to the Chino Valley School District in 1981, this was the district to come to as teachers, staff, and families were seeking a great opportunity, lifestyle, and educational opportunities. After our marriage in 1983, Jan and I decided we wanted to live in the district and bought our first house in South Ontario, around the corner from Levi-Dicki Elementary. We later moved to Chino Hills, raising a son and daughter who both attended Chino Valley Schools, graduating from Ayala High School. The excellent education they received allowed them to pursue their career goals. Our son was admitted to one of the finest engineering schools, Rose Holman Institute of Technology in Indiana, graduating with a degree in chemical engineering. As a bonus, he also met his wife at college, who graduated as a biomedical engineer, and now have a daughter who will be two years old next week. Our daughter, a ballroom dance instructor, attended Cal State Fullerton, where she was a member of their national champion dance team. Two years ago, Jan and I had the opportunity to once again attend County Superintendent's State of Education address, where we saw students from Briggs Elementary present their Rube Goldberg project and how that was in front of a large audience of administrators, elected officials, and employees. Just one example of what we, as a district, should be promoting. I want to put a positive focus back on our school district, whether it be in academics, the arts, or athletics. Since retiring, I've continued to attend school board meetings. I will do the homework and preparation necessary as your board member. I believe we are at a crossroads in this district. Our district is facing unprecedented challenges, and we need fresh leadership on the board. I want to see the Chino Valley Unified School District return to the days of when this was the district to come work for and for students to attend. Please join me in this effort. Vote for Don Bridge for school board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Andrew Cruz, you're next up with your closing statement. 90 seconds, please. Mr. Cruz?
As parents, we must agree to make decisions in our children's best interest to move them forward with independence, confidence, and courage. Our children deserve to be well-supported as they strive to achieve their individual goals and secure a most promising future. We want our children to chase their dreams and pursue their destiny. We want safety, security, health, maintain academic excellence, support extra activities such as marching bands, sports, swimming, dancing, clubs. A positive open door for parents volunteering at the school site, supporting STEM vocations and mentoring. Continuing building states of the art schools and programs for staff on mental awareness and mandating reporting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tony Flores, your closing statement?
As a board member, parents want good policymakers focused on putting accountability on how effectively and efficiently our funding, educational, and safety programs are implemented for all students, teachers, and classrooms. Number one priority. I will be an active member, providing oversight to our budget, monitoring our spending, and helping moms, dads, and guardians have a meaningful relationship with your children and teachers. I will also be an evaluator of our superintendent to technically, morally monitor his achievements. And I will do it with a smile. A vote for Tony is a vote for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our final opening statement, our closing statement, will come from Hovania Hayes White.
I strongly believe the Chino Valley Unified School District governing table is missing and needs the voice of a practicing teacher who knows how to lead with dignity and respect. A current educator who truly understands the implications of demeanor and behavior. An educational leader whose vision is to prepare and equip every teacher to provide all students, regardless of their background, equal access to an inclusive, free, and appropriate public education. I am a lifelong educational leader who will ensure all students, families, faculty, and staff within our school community are properly advocated for and represented regardless of race, religion, language, color, ethnicity, sexuality, gender, gender identity, disability, and/or socioeconomic status. I will be honored to represent this voice. I, Dr. Hovania Hayes White, pledge to serve the Chino Valley community as a sound, unbiased, impartial, responsible, and ethical leader. I humbly seek the support of the Chino Valley community and hope to earn your vote on November 3, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to thank all of the candidates for being here with us this evening and sharing your thoughts. I learned a few things tonight, and I hope that the people who are, are viewers learn something too. It is obvious by the information you shared with us that you are all committed to serving the Chino Valley Unified School District and the students of the Chino Valley. On behalf of the Chino Valley Chamber of Commerce, we wish you all the very best in the upcoming election. And the forum is now concluded. Please, everyone. And the forum is now concluded. Please, everyone, go vote. Thank you.